Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting for the Bell Salls June High School School District, School Board meeting to order, and first I would like to pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. And adjustments to the agenda, I think June you've got a motion for me?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to add executive session to item number five and all of the subsequent articles will move down a number.
And that's for a student matter, correct?
For a student matter, yes.
Correct. I would like a next budget discussion, but just everyone know that we sent June home. Zena home, so.
So the...
So is it 5A or is it...
Are you moving with you?
I'm just moving, so we're going number five is executive session.
Okay.
And then five will be six, six will be seven, seven will be eight.
Ah, that's what you're doing, okay, sorry.
Sorry. I didn't know.
Our communication, public comments, is anyone on the World Wide Web there, Andy?
Um, there are people out there, I don't know if there's anyone.
Did anyone like to speak that are out there? Oh, I see that now. Okay, so I would like, it looks like there's no public comment, so I'd like a...
We, I don't know, we do have other folks here, I don't know if they're, are they public comments or is that the executive?
I think they're part of exec, right?
Okay.
So I would like a motion to move an executive session for a student matter, please.
I'll make the motion, I'm trying to find Priscilla's wording. Where the public may be in, where's, help me out, Priscilla. Where prior knowledge... Yeah, go ahead.
Make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss a student matter where premature public knowledge could place the individuals and/or the board at a disadvantage.
And I...
And invite the administration.
I would like to invite Andy only.
We already made that decision.
Well, I would like to invite those, I guess we would have to answer. Not knowing why we would need to.
May I, or the board, we have a decision we need to make on whether we invite only Andy into executive session or Andy and John. David?
Well, are we having an executive session which includes anyone else besides the board and as it's proposed, the superintendent of schools?
We have four community members that would like to speak to us.
And four community members, I can add that.
Oh, yes, sorry.
With, with all due respect, Molly, I believe that just as we need to name administrators that come into executive session, that we may also have an obligation to name specific members of the public who come in. I personally am happy with them speaking to the board in confidence, but I want to point out that that might be a potential open meeting law consideration.
Andy, do I have to announce who would like to go into executive session?
I'm checking, I didn't know I had to. I didn't know that either.
We have it before when student matters have come to us, we have...
Never have.
Said we were going into executive session to discuss a student matter and whether or not, who we were invited in for administration and, and the principal, and we have never...
Never have.
We respected their confidence.
That's right, we respect them. I'm gonna stick my neck out and say we don't have to. So the question is, do we want to include the principal or not? David, you're up.
All right, if it is felt that having John in at least initially will be an awkward situation, then I would be quite happy to exclude him at least temporarily, but I think we may find that as a result of the executive session discussion, that we may decide to invite John in a little bit further down the line. I want to make it clear, I'm not opposing any motion to go in with or without administrative members or with, with or without members of the public who may have concerns named. I just think, let's get in there and see what we gotta do.
Is that acceptable to you, Priscilla?
Yeah, I just think that, on not knowing what's going on, I just feel that, you know, if, if he's at his school and it's a student matter, he should be there to give other information as well, and I would feel that the people up here would want to hear that.
John, are you gonna be right here? Not gonna leave us, right?
No.
Okay. So you okay with that, Priscilla? When we're in executive session, if we need John, we'll come get him?
I don't see why he wouldn't be, wouldn't come in, I guess I just don't understand.
I would like to go into executive session with just Andy, if that's okay with you for now.
Okay.
And I think once you get in, maybe it'll be more clearer, and I'm not trying to, I understand where your thoughts are, but I think that we just need to give some people a chance to speak.
Okay. So are we moving?
Yes, so all in favor of going to executive session inviting Andy and community members that are here who would like to win? Brenda, how do you vote?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Priscilla? Yeah. Dave?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Deb?
Aye.
Margot?
I'm standing.
We are out of executive session, no action will be taken, and we're going to go to review and approve board minutes for October 24th and November 14th. Okay, we have a motion to approve them, does anyone have any discussion or can we vote? June, the street here.
I have a question on October 24th. I, that's a long time ago, by the way, so I might be remembering this wrong, but I believe in that meeting you asked for just the school counselors to present at the next meeting.
I did, and I ended up with a whole slew of people.
And it says in here, we've asked the school counselors and the diversity committee to speak, so that was the only question that I had about the 24th.
We're gonna get them back here alone, because that's what we really wanted and that's what we asked for, and we didn't get that.
And that was on page two of eight, the top, second bullet, so.
All right, anything else?
Nope, I think I'm good.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor to...
I have something to deliver for 12.
Okay.
Sorry, can we have Mark's last name put in there on page five? All the others have last names.
Okay.
Marcus, what's your last?
That's G E B O?
G E B O.
G E B O. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes with the corrections for October 24th and November 14th. David, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Deb? Deb's gone?
No. Deb, she's, she's there.
She's still up there, can we come back to her?
Sure. Margot?
I'm here. Aye, is that what you want?
Thank you.
I was in the kitchen, I could hear you, but I couldn't get back too fast.
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Priscilla? Jason?
Yes.
Okay, reports, principal report.
Okay, I've got a swift one tonight.
Good.
That's what I thought you'd want. So, winner sports, boys and girls, basketball begin their season tonight, girls are playing Springfield as we speak. We've got almost 50 students in Boys and Girls, the Boys and Girls program, indoor track has a dozen, dozen athletes, and there's a few more still to be drawn. The winter concert last week, those that were here, on December 8th, our band and chorus programs gave their winter concert at the high school. The art program also had a display on that evening, and funding consumer science made lovely treats for everybody to provide for all the attendees. The music program also presented on Friday at the middle school, and this was to showcase band and choral programs at the high school and encourage younger students in the arts. And I do have an entrant raver in the middle school, who was actually in the band, but she said that a lot of her friends kind of opened their eyes up to possibly trying something. So I thought it was a very good, very good motivational activity from our guys to go down there. Number three, class mural, Mr. Botch's Global Citizenship Class, had been working with Regina Azimi and John Ungolider on a mural. The mural design is created using words, pictures, and ideas of our students, and it represents hope and peace through art, so a display of our stuff from our kids in the hallway. Building security, Ricky was working to secure the bid for our district and as a member of our school, and to include all access points, cameras, and general building security, so we had a lot of people out looking, I think it was at least six bidders out looking around, and they had a good walkthrough, looked at all our access points and what we have already, so hopefully that'll be coming along soon. PCBs, polyfluorinated biphenols testing, there's little corrections to my notes here, but the superintendent has been able to step up our date for this PVC, PCBs testing. It's not necessarily in January, but it's between January and March, so we'll be getting it done sooner rather than later. This allows to move forward with our projects with knowledge of our building.
And Bradbury former just put that in wrong, because I saw you had something where it said we were testing for something.
It said like FLAs or something, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It was testing for PFAS, and I think, yeah, they just reported it wrong.
Okay.
Our notes do say PCBs.
Yeah, okay, sorry to interrupt.
I don't know, okay. And lastly, our generators and circuit work is, the workers were complete, with the exception of renewing the breaker, we need to get, we have to come in and replace the breaker, there's a little bit to do with the circuitry around the breaker apparently, I'm not totally, fully aware of it, but I know it needs one last little tweak done, and then it'll be tested, and all the, all the, we've had all the testing done, the building state work done, prepared for this to get done, and then put a bow on it. And so I'm hopeful that this demand response will be, we'll be able to begin that in January, so, that's all I got for you tonight.
June?
Yes?
I have several questions. Number one, can we have an update on the girls locker room issue that, with the Bradwell football? Is there an update? And the second part of that is, is the new policy for our locker room use, did that go into effect tonight since it's our first away?
It went out to, yes, it went out to the away schools that are coming here, and I will get you a copy of that.
So do you have an update on the locker room issue?
I have, the sweatshirt that was taken was replaced, the student was consequence that Bradwell, if you like, again, it's by their rules, not by ours, however, the sweatshirt found its rightful owner, which is very good. The gray area around the door, did they pull it off, did it fall off, was it ready to fall off? Again, I don't think that will ever really be truly resolved. I think that we, by setting this new protocol and checking people in and checking them out now in, in all visiting teams, will eliminate future happenings of that. And the black paint that was suggested to be on the wall, apparently that is a, according to our other school, that is just something that boys are allowed to do in their locker room down there, so again, I don't know how we can blame the students if they're allowed to do it, I don't think it's a good practice, but again, we don't get to control what goes on broadly.
Okay. One of my other questions, can I continue? Okay, I just recently found out there's a dog in the building, and so I looked up the D-35, B-35 policy, which talks about this, but I ha, I have to, I can't believe that out of 320 kids, no one has a dog allergy, number one, and, you know, has she signed a waiver, does she sign a waiver yearly to if, because when I was told that there was a dog here, which was just last week, I thought it was one of those little pocket purse things. It's a German shepherd, and I have three German shepherds, and I know their temperament and how protective they can be, and, and so I just, you know, if, if they have a seizure or if, or if my kid stands up and looks like he's going to be aggressive towards the teacher, is the dog gonna react and whose responsibility is it at that point?
The responsibility of, I believe it's the responsibility of the owner, but the dog is fully certified, fully licensed.
And fully vaccinated?
Yes.
So, so you have to, the dog has to be a trained service dog, certified trained service dog, meet all those requirements before it can be allowed into the building. You can't just, you know, I got two dogs at home, I can't just bring them in with me and kind of thing.
Right.
You know, and I can't, I can't say, well, I need my service, you know, alligator.
Right.
Actually, is that, but, but like, you know, there's, it has to be trained and certified, I can't just, you know, bring something in because I want to bring it in.
So this policy states that they have to get approval from you, and...
Which, which we defer down to the building.
Okay, so who would take responsibility, and is there any considerations for, I mean, there are 320 kids and 100 staff members, is there any consideration for dog allergies? Especially since our ventilation system is horrible, and then I'm assuming the maintenance people, the custodians have to vacuum the hair up, and, and I talked to a vet today to get some handle on it, and she said, you know, there are diseases that humans can catch from dogs. You need to know their vaccinations, you need to know, have, you know, what they're on for flea and tick preventative, because if the dog brings in a flea or tick, there are numerous diseases that humans can get from those things. So I was just concerned, I mean, who takes, like, at first, you know, and I know some mean little dogs, but at first I thought it was a pocket purse, you know, dog, and then when I actually saw it this week when I was picking my kid up from basketball, it's a German shepherd, and I know what they're...
Is it a surface dog that is for the person who brought it in, like?
No, it's a therapy dog, to support kids and to support anybody who, to train and therapy dog.
So it's not trained, it's not a, so it's not there because of a medical reason? It's just there because we get it certified to be a therapy dog, and my dog's a therapy dog.
No, I mean, the allergy piece.
See, that, that's the piece, I want to just be really clear, because there are people who maybe have taken a dog and, and done some therapy with them, but they're not a certified, there is a certification that you have to go through to ensure, everything you just said, June, which is 100%, you can't just bring a dog in just because, you know, they're, they're there to help you walk around or something like that, they have to be trained in a certain manner and have all the backing.
So I, I'll pull all this stuff together for the next meeting.
Yeah, I was just curious, because at any given point, I mean, the dog could snap.
Didn't we already have that, though, on file?
We know.
It's, well, it says here that they have to meet state and federal law guidelines, and, and that, that it can be taken, withdrawn at any time for the animal hygiene, animal welfare, safety of the staff and students, that's why, I mean, I have dog allergies, I choose to take medicine because I'm not the only one that lives in my house, you know, but when you have a school of 320 kids and 100 or so employees, that may not be something...
Well, so to my knowledge, so I can only speak to my knowledge, to my knowledge, I have not been, there's that, nobody has ever come forward to say that there's a concern or a problem. I ran a building where I had a teacher who did bring in serve, trained service dogs and whatnot, we had a parent who brought up a concern and a, and child had allergies or whatnot, and we had to tell that teacher they can no longer bring the dog in because of that, and, I mean, make decisions, you gotta make decisions, I mean, so, but I haven't had someone say, my kid's got allergies and they're being exposed to, so I mean, otherwise I would have, we would have looked into that sooner.
Okay, I was just curious, because I had no idea, and apparently it's been here for a couple of years.
Moving forward, I think we could, of all of those questions.
And the other question I had was on the last couple of warrants, I have some questions. And, let's see, I'm not sure if it's for Andy or John or who, but it's, I'm gonna start with John. Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union Custodial Assessment, payment five of 12, what is that? Because we all have our own custodians, right?
Well, but you, so just as we went through the budget earlier, there are different areas that are broken out for assessment.
Yeah.
And so the superintendent's office, these custodials also, so you would be assess a portion of that fee, so you're not just getting one, instead of getting one bill that says, here's the assessment, Jim's broken it out so that you get all those different things, right, so you'll, you have to have a plow guy to come and plow our thing, so there'll be an assessment.
And we're gonna pay for six of that, or whatever.
Yeah, you pay that percentage.
Okay. The other one, the other questions, I guess goes around mileage reimbursement. Number one, is the principal required to go to a state game? Is the first question, and the second question is, do we have a car, a school, like a van that the school could use? Because we got, we have three travel reimbursements to go to the state game in three different vehicles. And, that's just a question.
So we have vans that are outfitted as, that are used as school buses, so they have the school bus signs on them, but they could be used by, if it's not during student hours. Theoretically, yes, staff could use them to...
Okay.
But they're outfitted with the red license plates, which means, so I would have to look into the legalities of, I just have a regular driver's license, can I drive, that type of stuff, so.
Okay.
Because they're not, it's not just a, a van with a, with a name on the side.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure Westminster has a van that has red plates, but, I mean, in the past, not brought anybody out, the principal's taking it, but whatever.
So I just need, but, but with the, the school bus signs on it and all that stuff, I need to look into, so that's the first one. I don't, I can't answer about is, who's required to be at a...
They could have taken a bus, too, right, June? The bus went there the same day, the football team.
Yeah, and years ago, we had a fan bus, I think it was for baseball game, a baseball state thing, but we had, we whipped together a fan bus, but, and the other question is, I've seen Joseph Rogirio is Rogirio Trash, so I'm curious why the check is being written to Joseph Rogirio and not Rogirio Trash Removal, and the same with Best Septic, the check is being, for the porta potties, the check that was, or the name that was on the warrant was Lisa Rogirio instead of Best Septic.
So, I'm assuming you went into the business office and signed?
No, I get a copy of, because I'm an alternate.
What I, but what I'm gonna ask, what I would ask you to do is to maybe ask the business office, because they cut those checks, the business office does that, I mean, I can check into it for you, but, but I don't know why it was written to a specific person as opposed to an entity.
Okay, and the last...
And it may not have done, it may just be how it's coded in there.
Wow.
So you're not looking at the physical check, I think, so I will, I will, I will check on that.
And the last question is probably for you, Andy, but when we got sent the warrants last time, the Rockingham Town Clerk was copied on the emails, was that a flip of the fingers, or, I'm just trying to wrap my head around why she would have to see what our warrants were. Okay.
So.
Okay, because she didn't know either, because she said, I'm not sure why I'm copied, but looks good to me.
Again, the warrants are coming out of the business office?
Yep.
So I'll have to look into, was that a, an error just on the person sending that?
Okay, all right, yeah.
Because if you put in Rock, and they're meaning to get it to the Rock Board, like, you got, if you don't pay really quick, I think it happened to be honest with you at Westminster, was, we were sending out something, Nicole was sending out something, and it went through the town clerk, or went, no, it went to a board member, was supposed to go to the town clerk, because she put in West too fast, and...
Oh, yeah.
It just, so it's plausible that that's what happened, they actually probably didn't go to Rock Board, it probably was supposed to, and went through there.
Okay, I think that's all I had for principal's report questions.
Yes, Jason?
I have two questions, John. Thank you, Molly. John, what is the process for hiring the, what is, can you walk me through the process for hiring a boys JV basketball coach? What was that process this year?
The process, we had assistant principal, athletic director, head coach, one applicant, they interviewed that person, we rely heavily on the, as it's a JV position and more about development, it was a smaller committee to do that. They recommended, and then I phoned two of the recommendations, two of the references that they had, but blowing references and we hired the individual.
So on the, so for the JV process, there's not a board, there's not a board that comes in like they do with RC for interviews?
Not, not necessar, there's not a, there's not a process written down, we just try and include many people, certainly on a basketball head coach position, JV is more about developmental and, and the, the needs of the head coach in any program, to involve them.
Nothing with desperation, because the other JV coach had left to hire a guy?
I don't think it's desperate, no, he was out for a short time, but he was only one, he was not, he wasn't one of people, season was beginning, so.
Who is the JV coach?
Jeff.
Jeff Potter?
Yes.
The guy that was here?
Groundskeeper, now, at a maintenance at Westminster.
Next question, on the number three, the class mural.
Yes.
Do you have a business plan of what's supposed to be the, what is the mural? Do you have an outline, did she give you an outline?
We have one, I don't have one with me from the ideas that I can send them to.
Reason why I'm asking is because when, when we had the last meeting, Mr. Botch next... Reason why I'm asking is because when, when we had the last meeting, Mr. Botchnek said that she was extremely biased and in one direction. I remember specifically saying, um, and she said, stated, if somebody has a better opinion, we, we negotiate and talk about it. But then, and we, we sent an email, I believe, and we all went and, uh, toured her room and it was extremely biased, uh, in one direction. Uh, so, you know, two part question is, has anything been done with that room to also incorporate other views of opinion? Um, because it looks extremely biased in one direction and, uh.
That's in your opinion.
No, that's what she stated, she said that she's extremely biased. And then when we toured the room, we all agreed that she's right, she's extremely biased. So I'm, I just want to make sure that, A, we, we had a conversation about the room to in- incorporate equality for all. And then I'm concerned with the mural that, you know, that, I want to make sure that you have a plan, you signed off on it, and Andy signed off on it, that it's okay for the, for the school. And it's not, it's, it's incorporating all, not a view, you know what I mean? Because that's why we.
So that, that's, you're saying that's what you'd like?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I want to make sure that you guys have signed off on it, it's just not.
Nothing's been done, so, I can, I will follow, I will forward on this and.
Yeah.
Email the, the plan out to everybody as soon as maybe tomorrow.
Yeah, and did, did we do anything with the room or have we had a discussion?
I haven't had a discussion, but I really, I, I didn't sense the, I, I didn't sense the urgency from the group as you were, or you're waiting for a meeting, just having a casual look around the room. All comments made, but I didn't sense any.
But like, so like.
I think your opinion, you know, like, the comments have opinions, not, not a direction, but now I know that.
I just, I just want to make sure that we're doing right for all of the kids in the building. And so like, I'm, I'm not here, I'm told all the time, it's not my building, I'm not supposed to micromanage you, all that kind of stuff, and I don't want to. But if you're walking around at the office and, you know, the school and it, you know, I believe that you want to do the right thing. Just, you know, just want to make sure that we're encompassing all viewpoints. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Mr. Brody? Okay, I think this is you too, John, but we're gonna go into budget discussion. We just had a budget meeting, um, we went through most of the lines, um, you wanna hit the highlights?
Sure. Okay, highlight, here we go. So the first highlight is the bottom, the bottom line is, at the moment, again, this is, this is a budget in draft right now. I, I don't know how many other meetings we will have, but we'll certainly have at least one more. We had our first go at the new, this new accounting system that Jim's put up. We're trying to get, we're trying to make sure that we have things in right places so that they're more easily understood than in budgets of the past. Highlights are, uh, salaries have increased, but not as much through, what I would say through attrition and through, uh, staff turnover. Even though we've had, um, three years now of, or, or what will be three years of pay increases, step increases. Uh, I think we're in a, a very good place for, for our salaries. Uh, staffing levels, uh, again, haven't, haven't altered any of those. We, we could maybe do with one or two more, but again, that's, um, like, for a future, a future meeting, another next meeting to, to talk about. But, um, the, we talked, we talked a little bit about the, uh, contracted services of planning, uh, or portioning a hundred thousand for that and possibly reducing that amount because we should be able to, um, support more kids within our building and not having to send them out of district uh, for programs that they may need. We should be able to support them better in the building, so hopefully we can have a reduction there. Uh, the generators being up and running and being fixed will impact our, the ele- electricity charges in a good way, which should bring those down. Uh, when we do our demand response, so, uh, one night a month, a demand response, um, that can, uh, save us between two and three thousand dollars a month, which is reported to us by Green Mountain. Uh, when we did it in the past, it may even be more now because the rates have gone up. Uh, what else? Don't know any, if any of the committee have any, any more we are looking at. That's pretty much it.
We highlighted some stuff, asked John to look at some stuff, um, we'll have one more budget meeting before we vote on it. Just to try to make sure we got as clean as we can make it.
Yeah.
Nothing, you know, not, nothing big going on, no big changes. Um, you know, we've added a couple line items in there, you know, not a lot of money, just to try to get some, some places, need some new furniture and things, but not, not huge, you know, no big changes.
Well, Jim said that across the state, there's like a eight point seven percent increase in many of the schools, but the state's trying to lower that with yields down to three point seven percent. So that may help us out as we kind of continue working on the budget.
Okay, any other questions? Let's move on to unfinished old business, driveway repairs. John, I think that's.
Again, okay, um, again, I'd asked the board, uh, previously about possibly doing a bond for our driveway renovation. Um, in my last correspondence with Stevens Associates, uh, the, the guesstimated price is approximately two million now. I'd like us to float a bond for that and.
Can you get that written up to get, to get to the towns so that it's loaded on March and also get Jim working on that?
Oh, yeah, I'll work with, I'll work with Jim now.
You gotta, can't let it, can't let it get through the cracks like last time.
No pun intended, right?
Yeah. But I think it's, you know, it's up to the towns, it's up to the community whether we do it or not, because they gotta vote on it. But I think it's important to get it out there, to talk about it for ten years.
And I know, well, I believe anyway.
Maybe we should do a show in town.
Jim's been, Jim's been looking into.
Your busted tire?
Drive in town.
So, we have, and the good thing is, we've had a lot of the plans, Stevens Associates, we paid them good money to honor it all in two thousand and fifteen.
So you can get it written up, get it to.
If you have plans, we should.
We have, we can do the specs pretty fast on our, yeah, and get it out there, get a bid on it and find out what it's really gonna cost.
Yep, yeah, we gotta, we gotta get on air, and we don't, we only got like twenty-five or thirty days before they're gonna want that for the reports and everything else. Um, are you AP classes? That's on the bud, that's on, on the driveway, it's AP class.
Okay, well, you did give us that, um, print, uh, that chart thing. Is that what it's for? I don't know where mine went, yeah. Is that what it's for?
No, no, that was, um, I, that was just general, that was asked, um, at the beginning of the year to, to give a, a constant update of where we're, where we're at.
So AP classes will prior to your report, the June mailed floors anyways.
Yeah, and that, that was part of, I give you that every meeting now, it's not like.
It, it's in the June fourteen minutes, June asked why the classes had such low enrollment in them and.
And he sent it to us in the, in his budget, in his, uh, packet.
It'll be on a future agenda, so the comment was.
All right.
Okay, well, no, well, if, i- i- if, if, when do you do the master schedule?
April.
So are you going to be involved in the master schedule?
Yes.
Because I love the idea of AP classes. I mean, my son, my oldest took all of them and went to college with twenty-one credits already. But I don't think it may not, it may not be economical to have an AP class with three students in it. An actual, that we may want to look at putting those online or virtual or waiting until we have a bigger number to put, to offer that class? And, you know, we're paying the teachers, most of them make pretty good money, so to have a class of three kids for ninety minutes.
So, so, so could we, um, and, and it's selfish on my part, I'm looking at the time, but, um, can we get back a little bit, um, come back in the next meeting? And, and maybe, um, we can have counseling do a, a precursor to think, like, to ask kids, like, so who's projected to thinking, thinking they might want to do it? So all you're doing is finding out some of that information, and that might help because, one, if you're finding you, you have low enrollment numbers, right? You can make some decisions early. But the second one is, um, I would love for us to maybe start having conversations with some of our, our, our neighbor schools that might have similar issues. And is there a way for all of us to combine, right? Maybe we're offering AP Calc, I'm making things up, and, you know, Leland and Graves offering AP Psych, right? And, and so the kids that are going equal.
Would be a wash.
Yeah, you know, I don't know, I, I mean, I just, I wonder.
It's worth a, a shot, um.
So.
And they've turned that road now, so.
Star all the way.
And Jim Vincent, um, mentioned to me that a lot of schools are doing every other year. So for example, the US History at four, if we did like sophomore juniors with, uh, US History one year, then we could skip the next year. You would have to do it next year because of our juniors, or you could do juniors and seniors next year for US History or, and, and, and skip, or skip a year. Um, comparative government, there's only four in it, uh, if you did comparative government and world history in one year, you'd have, you know, bigger class, you know? And, and you, you'd still have enough, maybe classes to excite the kids.
I think we need to look at it also because I don't know what the impact will be on, look at the kids that are here. Also, on, on scheduling, like, the other class schedules, right? Like, is it gonna, so.
Because Andrea had mentioned that in past administration, there was a minimum number and it was a really low one to have an AP class. We can discuss that.
Okay, so we'll talk about that at another time.
Yep.
Uh, new business for discussion or action, open board member seat for Grafton. Does anybody have anybody that would like to be part of the board from Grafton? It's a good time.
What is the policy, not necessarily the policy, but what is the background with having a community of Grafton?
Have to send a letter in, um, stating that they're interested, and then the board, uh, votes on it, on whether they, you know.
Gotta join the club.
Then, whether they're gonna join the club or not, um, and, you know.
How many years?
Almost at the end of the year, you know? I think if we could get our Grafton residents to get somebody on the ballot and not worry about it till March, we're probably fine. But, um, it would be nice to get, you know, get that, get someone from that side of town.
So was her term, how long was her term? Are, we're in the middle of.
So Molly can appoint someone.
To finish her term.
Just now finished the year, I believe.
Oh, yeah, just finished the year.
We just went through this in Knockingham.
It's finished a year and then they have to run the remainder of the term.
Technically, the board hasn't accepted the resignation. Um, Molly can just probably make a statement that she's accepting it, but, but we really haven't accepted it and advertised it, and we need to advertise it as well. And you're supposed to have thirty days.
So if you guys can accept your resignation, we'll get it posted as fast as possible and go for there.
Yeah, it's so, but I don't think it's anything we have to, okay, so we accept the resignation.
Thirty days, supposedly.
And.
If you have an applicant, but if you don't have an applicant, there's nothing to do.
Right.
Yeah, there's no applicants, so.
So somebody has to.
I don't think we have to advertise it, we have to get the people who are from Grafton.
We just post out there.
To, yes, their job is.
So if we call the ETA in Grafton and say, hey, Grafton doesn't have a representative on the high school board, do you have any idea of anybody?
Thirty days from today, they could send us a letter.
No, well, they send it a little bit earlier, we can get it for thirty days.
Well, but it's up to thirty days, right?
Yeah, I, I, I'm going out, I'm going out to Grafton on, on Thursday, so I'll.
Okay, you get a banner and put it on your truck.
I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get a stick and I'm gonna start, you know, beating the bushes, see what I mean, yeah, so.
All right. Director's comments, David.
Uh, thank you, Molly, I'm, actually, I'm all set tonight.
Deb.
Yeah, I think I had my say in executive session, I'm done, thanks.
Sonia.
I'm all set, thank you.
Michael. Miranda.
I have one. We're playing Apples to Apples, one of my favorite games for one of our family meals, and one of the cards was a high school bathroom. So the quote on it, I thought it was humorous because we've talked about the bathrooms lately. It was fools rush in where angels fear to tread. I just thought that was funny and, um, and we probably won't see each other again till after Christmas, so. One of my favorite songs, it's not a normal song, but I heard the bells on Christmas Day because it's peace on earth, goodwill to men, so that's my desire for all of us.
Thank you.
And I love, I love the light parade too.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, I didn't know we had that many trucks.
I'm all set, thank you.
For so long.
I'm looking across the room and I say, see, we all have magic inside us, so share that magic and share that kindness.
Thanks. You can read that?
Jason.
Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night.
Thank you, everyone, it was kind of a long meeting, but we got through some maybe difficult stuff and I hope everybody has a safe and happy Christmas, enjoy your family. Uh, the next meeting that is January ninth, that seems like a long ways away. Um, we are going to have a budget meeting before that, so it'll be five o'clock, budget six thirty meeting. You're the chairman, thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.